Good evening, everybody. We're glad to see you all here this evening. We will call this regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Lathrow Village to order, and I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Roll call. Mayor Brock.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garrett, here. Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson. And Councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Thompson by reason of-
So moved. So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. If she shows up after doing that, we'll just pretend we never did this. We'll unexcuse her. We would ask all of you to join us in the audience this evening in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the items on the consent agenda. Are there any of those items that any council member wants to move?
Yes, there's dispersment report.
That's not under there.
Oh, then strike that.
It's just the, excuse me for saying that, the, it is the minutes for the study and regular session held on Monday, the 25th of September. And then the other items would be the minutes of the study session held on October 2nd, as well as the regular special city council minutes for October 2nd, and October 3rd as well. So, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda then?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the dispersment report, and as per usual, we have two dispersment, two periods we're reporting on. One is the period from September, I just lost the one, excuse me. September 1st through September 15th of 2017, of dispersments totaling $45,849.68. And the second period is from September 16th through the 30th of 2017, in amounts totaling The, behind those pages are the, is the detail, and I would ask council members if they have any questions or comments upon any of the detail that's behind those reports.
And I know that we talk about this quite often, but I keep seeing Verizon Wireless under different, under public safety, under government services. It seems like there's one more place. So I'm just, is that four different accounts? I know that one would be your phone, and-
Right now, the city manager's phone, the police chief's phone, and then the treasurer's phone, which I gave to Parks and Rec. They have the phone now.
One more.
There should only be three phones.
Second one for the police department.
Oh, was there Verizon there? Okay.
Okay. And then on here, we have Schoolly Mitchell, the telephone savings. I try to balance my checkbook, but if there's no negative in front of it, I'm thinking that that's not a credit for us. That looks like something we're paying out.
We are paying out. That is a contract that was signed for a three-year contract with the previous manager, Matt.
I thought we got out of that contract with Schoolly Mitchell.
We can't get out of it. It was signed, it's a three-year, it's a three-year-
But it was three years starting from when, though? Because we had that-
Well, I think we still have a year and a half to go on it, or, yeah. It was prior to, because we looked into it-
So we still have a year and a half to go?
I think so. I don't know exact date, but I would have to look at the exact date. But there was a contract signed, and it was prior to, it was one of our previous managers that signed it.
But we have, we're under contract with them, but they're not doing anything for us, if I'm not mistaken, because we didn't go with their-
They keep looking at our accounts, that's all they're doing. But yes, we do have to pay out when they look at our accounts, I guess. That's what the contract is.
Has our attorney looked at it?
To where to save us money. To where to save us money.
But wasn't that contract up when they were in here, two years ago?
No, that's when they were in here for the contract.
Interesting.
And I know that you have a lot on your plate, but it's probably going to be advantageous for us and for our new council to really have a list of things that we have contract, that we're under contract with, to give to everyone, so we just know when things are expiring.
That will be of the clerk, yes.
Yeah, just to comment on that, because I think I have asked about two or three times for that. Because we want to know the start, just so we'll be clear on what we'd like to see, the start date, the finish date, the name of the company that has been awarded the contract, and maybe just a line or two of the description. So that's the start date, the end date, the name of the company with the contract, and just the line of the description. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or points on the report?
Yeah, can I get clarification on page 19, where it says US Bank Voyager Fleet-
It's 19, that's, excuse me, it's 19 on the page.
Oh, it's 19, it's actually written in as a number 19 on-
19, I have it, I have it.
You do?
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll just, yeah, it's different, sorry.
What is it?
Page 19, where it says, let's see-
Voyager?
Yeah, US Bank Voyager Fleet System.
That's our gas.
Okay.
Gas for vehicles.
I just need clarification on that.
That's gas for vehicles.
Okay, and what about contractual services for Lathrow, public service?
That is our contractual services with Lathrow Services for the DPS.
Oh, this is DPS, okay.
Yep.
All right. The, okay, where it says Cummins Generator, that was for the, not the Fall Fest, but for the-
Probably Kimmy Horn, or-
Or the-
Was it for that one, or was it for the lights that were out for the Food Truck Friday?
That was Cummins, that was Kimmy Horn.
Okay.
Kimmy Horn, okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Katrina.
Last one is, again, services, so this is DPS.
Yes.
Okay, it's the same thing.
They come out in multi-accounts.
All right, and, okay, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other thing else? Could we have a motion then to approve the dispersment reports?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next is the approval, acceptance of the department, various departmental reports, and I believe we have, leading the bandwagon is the police report, then there's the monthly permit list, and code enforcement reports, and DDA activities is another one. Is there any other item missing, Madam?
I would like to bring up something on the DDA report. If I could, please.
Okay.
The DDA is looking at putting streetlights down on Southfield Road here, and they have mentioned, they got a quote through the company to do the park back here, which is over $6,000, and they're going to be, if the DDA approves lights on the street, then they're going to be coming with a quote, or we will, the city will be coming with a quote to council for the parks and, the lights in the park to have a match what we're going to be putting on Southfield Road.
The planning commissions, I think, too.
So, it's just a-
Planning Commission report is along those departmental reports, just so you know.
That was just something that I wanted to bring to your attention, that it will be coming down once the DDA decides which lights are going to be put on the Southfield Road.
So they're going to be paying for the lights on the street, but you're saying that we're, the city's going to have to pay for the lighting?
For the parks.
Yes.
For the parks.
Okay, so-
To keep them all to the same.
Okay, so I'm sure they're being prudent on the amount, and, you know, I don't want it to be like the road thing where someone approves a contract and we have to just go along with what they say. Do we have any say-so?
You don't have to do it.
You don't even have to do the lights if you don't want it to-
The point of, they have, we have to peel it off, because the DDA is restricted to using money for public improvements within the district boundaries.
Okay.
The park is not within the district boundaries. So, if they're going, the question will be, if we want the lights here in the park, which are so close to-
Okay.
The DDA boundaries, boundaries here, and it's, the rest of the lights in the center city are going to be of this new type, if we want those at the same time, the city will have to approve that as a separate thing.
I understand, so we'll get to see it and-
You'll get to see it, in fact, you should receive a full presentation at a study session, so you know what it is the DDA is agreeing to, and that we all see the lights that are being considered.
Yeah, I was at, actually, at one of the DDA meetings when they talked about it, and I'm really excited about the-
The only thing I find negative about it is that they do them, they're in wide use in Ann Arbor, saying that.
So I have just a couple of things on the police report.
Yes.
I can talk, and again, every, every month, we talk about the animals. There's more animal, more dog bites, more things going on. And I don't know if that committee has actually been functioning, we keep talking about it, um-
It has not been-
Working, and the fact that we should be tracking these dog incidences, so that, you know, in case we have to reevaluate.
The members of the committee are designated in the ordinance itself, and the, those individuals know who they are.
Okay.
The police department is, however, enforcing the ordinance. They are issuing citations where it's appropriate, and the committee is kind of a court of last resort, if you will, that those cases, as they progress through the system, they may eventually end up there. None of them have reached that point yet.
Okay, so the committee doesn't meet unless it's necessary?
No, that's right. That's right.
So, and I'm glad you brought it up, because-
It's like a judiciary committee, you know.
I'm glad you brought it up, because there's five, there was five this time-
Yeah.
Of animal complaints, and one thing about the committee, they don't meet until something happens, but I'm wondering if we need to expand the dog committee's duties or responsibilities, include more residents on it, to try to be more proactive, because truthfully, before I left my house today, there was a big black lab running in my front yard, you know, but I'm in the house, my dog's in the house, and so I'm thinking that we need to have some type of, maybe this committee does some things that, you know-
Did you call the police department to come pick up that dog?
No. I mean, it was, he was cool. I mean, it was, the owner came down the street later and got him, so it wasn't a big deal. But it is a big deal, because it was not on a leash, but the point is, is that-
It's violation of the ordinance.
Absolutely, but I don't think that we should have something that they meet after an incident, after someone got bit, after somebody's dog got bit. I think that there needs to be something like, you know, good dog training, or-
Proactivity.
You know, more activity around it.
I actually thought that the committee was supposed to have regular meetings to discuss. I never thought it was just for a judicial purpose.
Oh, we had it.
I mean, that, to me, that's not, that's not-
That is the purpose of it, and the, the committee that-
How do we change that?
The committee we had originally was made up of citizens and folks that were interested in changing that ordinance, and they addressed, and the new ordinance was a product of that work of that committee.
So how do we change that, though? Because every, you know, every month, last month, I believe there were two, one month, now this month, there's more, and I think we worked really hard to make that happen, that committee happen. So how do we increase their ability to do more, discuss more, bring more to the table? Can we change? How do we change that?
Well, you can request the, sure.
I think it's necessary. I mean, it's a problem. We got five this time.
About us discussing the dog committee?
Mm-hmm. Adding more residents.
So is that something our attorney has to look into? On that committee?
Well, they did the work, so-
Right now, on the committee is the mayor-
Yeah, I would think so.
The attorney, the police chief, and the manager. That is the committee.
No, there's a resident that's also on it.
The mayor never, the mayor appointed somebody, but it was never formally appointed at a council meeting, where, you know, where-
So we really don't have a committee together?
We have a committee.
We do have a committee, however-
With no residents.
With no residents.
The appointed members are allowed to designate someone in their place.
Right.
The chief of police is one of those. He did designate one of his, members of his force, he's the only one that's designated anybody to date, and that was Officer Upshaw. So, you know.
But, and we got, we have the staff part down. It sounds like we got that down, we're good. What we don't have in place is an appointed resident, as what we said we were going to do, and so that's why I keep asking, who is that?
The manager can appoint a resident in her, in her or his stance, but I have not done that, because I am only an interim, when we get the full-time manager on there, that is their choice to do that.
See, we've asked this question on repeated, in repeated meetings of, is the committee put together? We keep getting the answer of, yes, it is.
Yes.
It's not, because we don't have a resident that's a part of it, that who's been appointed.
And I guarantee you, if a resident was on this committee, there would have been some meetings, there would have been some people really upset about some things. We've had people in here with dog bites that just barely made it out of their lives, and now we have reports, more and more reports on dog bites. I guarantee you, if we had our resident, somebody from the community-
We do have a resident in the room, and we'll talk to you about that in a few minutes, probably.
Yeah, we need, we really need to rethink that, because-
There's, no, someone in this room will come up to the mic and tell you that-
But that's, okay, so we're interesting.
But we need to talk about how to shift this committee, so that it's a working committee that's, that's-
If that's what you want it to be, just we ask the city attorney to make a recommendation to us as to what language you change.
Okay, so do I need to, do we need to make a motion that we-
Just a minute, Scott's going to get up and talk to, because, and the, in the ordinance, it states certain things.
I'm sure.
Without having reviewed it for a number of months, I am the police chief-
You can't recognize a candidate.
I'm sorry, I'm the police chief?
Police chief.
Yes. My understanding, the ordinance was changed or even adopted because of some of the prior circumstances with some of the vicious animals that we've had here. Since adopting the ordinance, we have had dog bites, but it hasn't been a repetitive nature to escalate the situation far enough to bring it in front of the board, for us to review it and decide whether or not that dog could be categorized as a vicious animal, therefore, taking the proper steps to remove it from the community. So, that was my understanding of the, you know, the board. Yes, we do have animals on the loose, we try to address them, you know, if we're notified, we try to do that. We do issue citations on a regular basis, and we try to keep track of everything that's going on through our report-writing system, so we do have a list of homes that we have issued tickets to for dogs at large and for animal bites. If there's anything else that the, yes, ma'am?
It's not about what you all are doing. I get everything that you're doing, and I get what the, I was on the ordinance committee to put the ordinance together. The way that I walked away from it was that we would have a resident appointed to it, that's my only issue, and that going forward, because I know what it was before, because I do know that it was for, if something happened, we meet only for that, but going forward, because we're having some more incidents of dogs being around, perhaps we need to be proactive and come up with just different plans, or have different programs, maybe we need to expand the committee. But what I'm hearing right now, there is no expansion, because it's really not a committee, because we haven't appointed a resident. That's where I'm just stuck at, sincerely.
And, and every month, literally every month-
We've asked about it.
I know I've been asking about this issue. A citizen, a citizen would have probably come, we're all, you all are all busy, we're, our staff is busy, and, and so, but if a citizen had that, I guarantee you, they would have said, let's put a note out to the citizens, let's, let's do something proactive in the neighborhood, so that we're not waiting until somebody, you know, gets their eye bit out of something tragic to have to make a difference. So that's my thing, we need citizens on here that can work the, work the committee, get the word out to the community, there are more loose dogs. I mean, how many people knew that there were more loose dogs running, running loose in Lathrow Village? You don't know how many people would know to look out if you see loose dogs, you know, to make it an issue, so that we can somehow try to contain it. And so, I agree that we need to, if we, if it's rewriting, talking to our attorney to rewrite it, because I'm just seeing exclamations and esclaves.
Esclaves.
So, thank you, both of them, happening. So, and it's concerning. I mean, we want to walk, this is Lathrow Village, we want to be able to walk in our neighborhood, we want to be able to walk our dogs and do things, so you all are busy, our, our staff is busy, we just need the community. We got, we got some awesome community people that will work this thing. We should do it. Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Scott.
This is our new police chief, by the way, Scott McKee. So, please, just in case-
Do we have a name?
Scott McKee, Chief Scott McKee.
Chief Scott McKee.
So, before we move on-
And he cleans up nicely, by the way, nice jacket.
Before we move on, how are we going to resolve, what are, what's our next steps?
City attorney.
But we're not changing the ordinance.
No, we need to-
Right? It's not an ordinance change.
If the ordinance, and I haven't looked at this, because, but if the ordinance says the mayor is to appoint the citizen, if that's what it says, then-
It doesn't say that, it just says that it-
City manager?
We may appoint a designated for each one of us.
Yeah. So there's not a-
There's three positions named.
Both, so there's only three, there is not a position specifically for a resident.
So the question is, can we amend that?
Sure.
And can we, I think that we should talk about amending it.
And I'm totally confused, because it was always supposed to be a resident.
It would take a majority of council to agree to-
Okay, hold on, we're getting some instruction here.
Yeah.
We take-
If the majority of council wants to add a citizen position specifically to this committee, then there would be a motion to do that, with direction for the city attorney to modify the ordinance to create that new position.
Well, can I make a motion now to do that?
You certainly can.
Okay, say it again, I make a motion.
Make a motion to amend the documentary ordinance to allow for a fourth position, being a resident appointed by the mayor? I'm just throwing that out.
Does it have to be appointed by the mayor?
Other, well, then it's got to be appointed by somebody.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would be the city manager.
Okay.
Those are the only two that you could do it.
Okay, appointed by-
That's up to whatever you want to put in your motion.
Okay, appointed by the mayor?
Or interim city manager, or manager.
Okay, it has to be one.
Well, no, just one.
Appointed by the mayor to join this-
Dog, we'll call it the dog committee meeting.
Dog committee, and so I make a motion that we add a citizen.
Okay.
And that the mayor would choose that citizen.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, why, I mean, I don't-
Two.
I think that we need to look at the ordinance, because I was on that committee, and we had a resident on there already, and so it doesn't appear that we're doing that, because you just said that you didn't appoint the-
It's not in there.
It just said that we didn't-
But we had applications for a resident. I don't think a resident was appointed, which-
No.
We, we selected, we select-
No, I'm saying, there were applications that were submitted, because we discussed selecting a resident, but we didn't select one, apparently.
Well, we've been telling a resident that's been asking about this committee repeatedly-
Well, some of us thought that's-
I'm not backtracking, I'm just saying, that's what, that was the process.
No, I'm saying that we have had a resident, I know she's been blowing up my phone, asking me about this, the committee-
Your phone.
My phone, my email, everything else.
Facebook.
And we've been responding to her, saying we have all the people on the committee, and we don't.
I responded that way.
We do, because the ordinance tells you who they are, they're appointed, there is no other positions. Now, you want to add a position for a resident, that's fine.
Okay.
Some of us thought that was there all along, I agree with you, by the way.
What was the reason?
I thought it was, I don't know, when the final ordinance came out, we all reviewed it, we approved it.
No, what I'm saying, what was the reason why we had residents submit an application?
Because some of us thought that that was what was going to happen.
It was missed, is what's been said.
I'm not, I'm not saying that she's wrong in what she had heard.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm saying that it is not what is in the ordinance.
Okay.
So if we want the ordinance changed, let's just change it. It's simple enough to do.
Yep.
Okay.
I agree.
All right? That's all I'm saying.
It's been, I made a, you second? Okay, I'm-
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. All right. Are there any other questions about the departmental reports?
Uh, no.
This DDA, I have one other, on the DDA work crew?
Yes.
Is this the work crew that's going to be, we talked about this being the work crew that's going to help with 696?
Yes.
And, that's wonderful, so the DDA-
District areas.
Okay, all right.
To keep them cleaned up.
Okay.
It's 11-mile road.
Yes.
County done that.
Yeah, so MDOT doesn't have to do it, okay.
Thank you.
MDOT won't do it, so that's the reason we have to.
Okay, I'm good.
I can tell you that MDOT does not clean up roadways.
Okay.
Cities that, the roadways that go through, they clean them up, because it reflects badly on us if we don't, so. That's the reason that, you know, Southfield's been doing this for years with the lodge and others that run through it, they organize the work crews and send them out to get those areas cleaned up, because they don't want that, their reputation tarnished by all the stuff that our friends and neighbors throw out on the roadways as they go through town here, so we need to, that's the reason that we use this group. Are there any other?
Is, this one in this group?
I don't know what that is.
Planning Commission, no, we'll talk about that later, Planning Commission. Planning Commission.
It's the minutes, right?
Yeah.
The planning commission minutes are included in this group.
Are not?
They are.
Okay, so-
They always have been.
Okay, so going to, again, same conversation, the rope lights.
Yes.
That they're still being used, and they're still being used.
That's right.
And they're still being used after we wrote the charter, for them not to be used.
Chief?
I'm sorry, I'm getting attention.
The rope lights.
Rope lights-
Yes.
That are against the ordinance. That's really so much the police department as it is the code enforcement officer, and he's been given strict orders to issue the citations, and to go after the folks who are continuing to put those up, and haven't. So, that's within the last, if they've been getting citations-
If there's specific violations that you would like the police department to look at, we'd be happy to do that, or work in conjunction with the code enforcement officer to make sure citations are issued, we'd be happy to do that.
If you could work in conjunction with the code enforcement, because I mean, they're still up, and we approved this charter, what, six, seven months ago, and they're still up. And then the new company's company are putting them up, so.
If you have specific addresses that you can provide me at the meeting, I'd be happy to take them down.
All right. That's all I can.
You'll personally take them down, or the?
Well, I'll take the address.
Yes, it's down, okay. I was going to say, I'm going to come along on that ride and see how that works.
I'll take them down.
All right.
All right.
Do we have a motion to accept the departmental reports?
So, moved.
Second.
So, moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We're, oh, I didn't get, how far did I get here? All right. The item, we've now reached that point in our agenda where we invite those who wish to discuss issues not listed on the agenda, this is your opportunity to come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the record, and I've got a couple I need to recognize first. Kelly, you want to introduce the.
I know, yes.
Our guest. Step on out here. He comes bearing gifts, I understand.
I do, I do. Hello, everybody.
All right, give us a.
What's your name?
I'm sorry, my name's Kano Phillips, 809 Bay Street, Punnet, Michigan. So, make me official.
All right, go ahead.
Hey, go ahead.
Well, everybody, good evening to all, good evening to council, mayor, Mayor Protem. I'm here today because, you know, actually, I was here back in January 2016 when they had the Flint water crisis. You know, and that crisis, I don't know if you got a chance to go up to Flint at the particular time, but we're talking about over 600,000 people that were poisoned, to the extent where you got, and you know, a lot of our senior citizens, we had some senior citizens that passed away because of what actually took place up there. And I came to you as a city and as a community, and I asked for your help. I asked if you could go ahead and contribute, we had a mission to take 10,000 bottles of water up there at that time in 2016. And y'all stepped up like no other, as a community. We started out with a mission for 10,000 bottles of water, and because of generous, selfless contributions like yours, we, you know, going up there with 30,000 bottles of water. And a sizable donation also go to some families that were in need, that just had absolutely nothing, because one thing, water was one thing, but there was a lot of other supplies that were needed, you know, like something that basically is hand sanitizer. But it was because this community stepped in the way that it did that I felt compelled, actually, it's ironic, I should have really made this presentation a while back, but then, something else came up. Hurricanes hit Puerto Rico. Now, hurricanes first originally hit Florida, and of course, it started with Houston, talking about category fives. You know, I know a lot of people down in Houston, family members that are down there that were affected. Florida was the same thing, but the one thing about Puerto Rico, Puerto Rico is an island which is a US, is part of this nation. And it got overlooked after the first hurricane hit, and then, something unfathomable had happened, a second hurricane, we're talking about two category fours at the point of contact when they hit those islands. And when I look up on the news, and I look at CNN, and I see the mayor of San Juan, Puerto Rico, and I look at the president of that nation, and they're sitting over there in tears, and it basically said it doesn't make a difference what we do at this particular point, a lot of our people are going to die, because we don't have the means or the resources to go ahead and reach some of these mountainous regions that they have over there in this country. So, once again, I had a friend of mine, who's from Puerto Rico, who has family members who yet, he's yet still to get in contact with them, because their telecommunications sources are down. And so, he just wanted to go ahead and do something, and so, he reached out to me and my foundation, I run a foundation called the Clarence Phillips Ascend Foundation, this foundation has been instrumental, and it started originally with us dealing with kids coming from disadvantaged backgrounds, kids that just had absolutely nothing, kids that come from households, that things that were happening in their households that would make you cringe, when you know the type of adult life that they were dealing with. And since its inception in 2011, it ended up growing to become something so much more. And so, mission work ended up becoming a big part of it. So, as a part of that, it brought us to what just took place in Puerto Rico. This man came to me and, see, all of us, we're going home, we're going to be real comfortable in our households, but we're talking about a man who was born and raised in Puerto Rico, who moved up here to try and make a better way for not only himself, but for his family. And now, the family members he left behind, he's not even able to go ahead nor if they're even alive. He wanted to do something, so he wanted to do something huge. So, it brought me back to Lathrow Village again, and you stepped up and you showed out like no other. I came and I gave the information to Kelly Garrett, excuse me, Mayor Protem, Kelly Garrett, and she brought it to you as a community. And I thought I was going to come, that thing, you know, I get a phone call, telling me I'm going to come pick up a couple boxes, I had no idea that you had that whole hallway basically jam-packed and stacked, that whole back room stacked with supplies and materials that was going to go and help these families out, individuals that had absolutely nothing, all the essentials, and you did that. And so, I felt compelled that I wanted to just let you know how much I greatly and graciously appreciate all of you as a community, as well as a council. You know, a lot of people talk it, but not a lot of people jump out and do it, they just don't. And you, as a community, did that, not only once, but twice. So, that being the case, there was an award that we were going to go ahead and present at our award banquet back in 2009, I mean, at the end of this year. But it was going to go, and this award, we decided, because we have so many municipalities and communities that have stepped up in different ways to go ahead and help and assist, but after you came with this second go around, if you came with no brand, who this award needs to go to. And so, that's why I'm here today to present this to you as a city and you as a community. And so, at this time, I'd like to present to you, for the 2016 Flint Water Crisis and 2017 Puerto Rico Mission Critical Project, the Clarence C. Phillips Ascend Foundation present this, the Spirit of the Cause Declaration, to the City of Lathrow Village and the Lathrow Community. As a token of our gratitude for your invaluable humanitarian contributions to both of these life-altering missions, it is individuals like you that breathe life into the very fiber of community, state, country, and that it also extends beyond borders. So, we thank you on this day, the 16th day of October 2017. Signed, Kano Phillips, Ascend Foundation President. So, I graciously and gratefully thank all of you for that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
We appreciate it.
There's another one in the back too, just in case you.
Just in case I want an extra one.
I have some blankets for you.
All right.
Thank you.
Want to pass it on down?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I think you have an introduction you wanted to make this evening, in this part of this time as well?
Chief, I just want to take a couple minutes just to introduce, we have a new part-time police officer here at the city of Lathrow Village, and I'd like to introduce Amanda Carmack.
Yeah, all right.
So, I come from Oakland University, I graduated there with my bachelor's in 2015, and I just recently graduated from the Combs Police Academy.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, 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 a woman.
Good.
Welcome aboard, thank you.
Girl power.
Welcome.
Good job.
Sounds like you did a good job, chief.
Good job, chief, we appreciate it.
All right. Others that want to be heard this evening? I think I saw a hand over here.
Good luck.
Sorry to keep you waiting. Again, give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Nat Kingsbury, San Jose Boulevard, and Secretary of the Historical Commission. This isn't going to be nearly as riveting as those last two, sorry about that.
I'm sitting right on the edge of my seat.
Yeah.
I'm ready.
Don't doze off. I left on your desk tonight, an invitation to our upcoming annual meeting, which is the 26th at the church, and also, an invitation to join the Historical Society, we're small and kind of struggling to get along, but we just got a grant recently, so, work is happening, and we'd love to have you join us. And recently, the society president, Robin Roberts, and I attended a conference put on by Oakland County called Making Places. The keynote speaker was Mark Wyckoff, Director of Planning and Zoning at MSU, and he talked about downtowns, why having a vital downtown is important to our future as a community. One of the main elements we fail miserably on is the physical form of our downtown, we all know that. The ratio of building height to the width of the road is completely the opposite of what he described as being the ideal. But, there's a lot of other things that are important, and those include the proper mix of land uses, broadband access, historic preservation, culture, a welcoming feel, and housing options beyond just single-family. And he said, why this is important is because where there's good form, people gather and economic activity is generated. We want business, business needs talent, and talent will choose to live in quality places. I think the most important thing he said to me was that you need to establish broad public engagement, and you need to know what the community wants. And his point was, that doesn't mean just the legally required public hearings when you do something, but a completely well-defined feedback loop. And I think you probably all know that, I mean, if you had that with the animal ordinance, you know, maybe things would be different now, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I just thought it was so important, I know governments struggle with it everywhere, but maybe when we have a new manager, maybe we can start working on that.
We've, just to give you a little bit of the history of our planning activities, is that the city has long recognized the importance of what you just described, and in fact, we used a lot of community-based workshops as we've gone through two versions in the last, over the last 68 years of updating our master plan for the city. And they were broad-based community groups, they were held down here in our community room, and so, the type of activity you described is exactly what we have used, and I'm sure we'll continue to use as we move forward. So, appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard this evening? We're going to make you walk the mile before you can ask it.
Debbie Hotland Dunn, 27440, Lathrow Boulevard. Is there an update on 11 Mile and Lathrow Boulevard? I saw trucks today when I was coming home from work, is that you guys leveling that out, or are they?
It is the contractor employed by the owner of the property.
So, they're going to be starting to build?
I remain to be convinced of that, but I think what you're saying is, the underground work that has to take place is now underway.
Okay.
Work that we expected was going to begin almost a year ago.
Right.
And they have to get moving on that and keep moving, because the extension they were given by the Planning Commission for their building permit, I haven't, no one has gotten back to me yet as to when that expires, but it's got to be within the next few months, so.
Okay.
They've got to get that, they have to be well underway.
Okay.
And I thought that was discussed at our last meeting.
Well, you guys said that it was coming up for review again, but.
So, we need to close the circle on that and get the date.
But, I mean, if they're moving on it now, I just didn't know if that was, you guys had discussed just kind of having them.
Well, it could have been a little confusing out there today, because I think there may have been two things going on at once. Out on Lathrow Boulevard, the DTE was there, because there's a pole.
Yes.
Leaning precipitously across the road, it needs detention, but then, back on the property you were just describing, there is work going on there as well.
Right, bulldozers were actually moving soil.
Bulldozers were actually moving soil, and putting down sewer lines, things of that nature, so, yes.
Okay.
So, that is the first encouraging signs we've seen.
Okay.
And we have been after them pretty aggressively, by getting that moving.
I thought I just saw something that was in the planners', was it in the planning notes, or was it in, it was something in our.
Ken wrote something on it, but it wasn't.
No, it's not from Ken, it was something in our planning pack, is it from the planners' or from something?
Well, probably the reports that had been given to the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thank you.
It was something in it. You're welcome.
It was a letter from Ken, saying he's going to be here, but then it.
No, there was something that is even in the planning notes.
Yeah, it was in the Planning Commission.
Yes, in the Planning Commission notes.
Anybody else? Yes. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Angela Blue, and I live at 26335 Lathrow Boulevard, and I have a couple of concerns. One is that the overlapping trees that covers the side, that, you know, covers over the sidewalks. I am a walker, and I have been chased by dogs, okay, so I'm very concerned, very, very concerned about that resident on the community, or however you're going to draft the new language there. I think it's something that needs to be done, okay, because all of us are not youth no more, and we can't run as fast as we used to. So, we're standing there, you know, please, somebody come help, call your dog. So, I think that's a very important issue, and probably, like I heard being discussed earlier, if you had a resident, someone within the community on that committee, that committee would meet more than it's meeting now, because they would be reporting out. There's a lot of walkers, when I'm walking, I'm running into all kinds of walkers, so I think that's an issue that really needs to be addressed, and the sooner new language can be drafted, I think it would be a benefit. Number two, what is, I live at Lathrow at 11. Can you tell us, or tell me, what is going to be, what's going to be put on that piece of land lady just described?
Condominiums.
Condominiums, okay. Again, like I said, we had overgrown trees, my worst, you cannot even come down the sidewalk on Margate and Southfield Road, cross from DXL, you can't even walk on the sidewalk, on both sides, on the Margate side, along with the Southfield Road side, and it didn't just get like.
This is where the sidewalks are, you said?
That's right.
Yes, okay.
Where the trees, because the trees are hanging over.
We'll D P.
I mean, they've taken it over.
We'll tell DPS to go out there and check that out.
This is my first meeting, but I'll be back, I'll be back, okay? But I feel very, a young man asks me how long I've been in Lathrow, 25 years.
Wow.
Okay, and I love the area.
It's time you showed up, then.
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. I wasn't good, I'm not so.
My name is Mary Lou Resnick, and I lived here for 55 years. And I'm a resident at 18880 San Jose Lathrow Village. I'm concerned about the dog thing too, and since I'm not here for every meeting, I'm going to bring it up, poor Ian's not even looking at me because.
I'm just writing down the address.
I jumped on you, because you're my connection on Facebook, and I wanted to know some answers to some questions, and I know, I think he handed it off to you, and I wasn't getting any answers at all on Facebook. So, I focused it on the one person that I actually had dialogue with. So, I know that I was very frustrated when I put in an application to be the resident for the dog community, I worked for a nonprofit that worked with animals, and I think, I agree with you wholeheartedly, that there has to be something done proactively with residents and the dogs. So, people are not afraid of them, and the people that do have dogs that act up, and I know one person that was very interested in being in the community, may or may not be good, but we all got to get along, we live too, we're too close together, and I see the dialogue on Facebook.
I agree.
It's just too beautiful of a community to let it go to pot, so, as far as that topic goes. So, Mr. Rock, please consider me to be your resident, to be proactive with this dog committee, or have several residents get involved, because a lot of us love animals, a lot of us have a good idea, and we'd like it to be addressed, and we'd like our questions answered, especially the ones that can't make city council meetings all the time, so thank you for your time.
Very good.
I agree, thank you.
Very good.
Can I add one?
And just a word to the wise, I think that, don't get on Facebook and tell people that you want something done about us, get hold of us at City Hall, because that's where the action has to stem, from the city administration, from the police department, or whoever it is, whose ever domain it falls in. We are, it's not their job to sit there and read Facebook postings, and I don't think that's a good way to let us know what you need, okay? Yes.
Mayor's response back?
Sure.
When I filled out the application to be on the committee, I, okay. To be on that committee, I expected at least a phone call, or a question.
And I agree, I apologize for that.
Yeah, bad, very bad, and I don't even know how many people were, you know, whatever, but I wanted to know who was, what was their background, what made them.
There was two or three.
Okay, I still want to know.
There was not a lot.
Okay.
And one is the one you referred to.
Okay.
Without mentioning names, and yourself, and I think there was one other, I have to go pull that file out and look.
And I agree with you that, you know, well, it won't be the dead horse.
If we all get to know each other's dogs too.
Right.
The familiar, okay, who else can't talk? If we all know each other's dogs, there's less of an inclination for the dog to come
barreling at you if they see you.
My goal is not to have anybody get to know my dogs.
Well, you, I think you have proven, I mean, good point today and thank you.
Okay.
Coming to the, thank you for coming to the mic.
All right. Anybody else wish to be heard? Yes.
Gray Screen, 17630 Roseland Boulevard. The DTE replacement electric poles, they replaced mine. It is twice the size and I have two poles in my yard, not one, but two.
You're not talking about lights.
No, no, no.
Poles.
The electric, the electric poles that they're replacing in the village, mine is twice the size and a half. And I have two poles in my yard and I didn't mind them replacing it, but just replace it with the same size. The new pole towers my house from the front. It looks horrible. I called DTE, nothing, no go. So I hope no other resident has that problem. So if you guys can help me see what we're doing when they replace, they said they weren't gonna do them in March, but mine is in. Actually, I have two now. And they loaded it up and now I have a...
Just say they've been putting them on.
Are they taking the second one down?
No, they didn't take the second one down.
I said, but are they coming, I mean, because sometimes they put them up to take the second one down.
I don't want the first one. I want the one I had replaced the same size. It towers over and it makes us look like a horrible place. Those tall poles belong on the boulevard roads, not in my backyard.
So they're twice as tall?
It's twice as tall.
Okay, wow.
And I have two. And I should have only had it replaced with one the same size. Now I'm having electric from Ogas and everybody else on 12 Mile. So I hope this doesn't turn into a fiasco.
I gave...
The first fiasco when they didn't tell us they were coming.
Right.
They started dropping those poles in neighborhoods all over town.
But do they have a right to do that? Do they have a right to, they can put double, twice as high poles?
I have no idea what they have a right to do, but that's...
Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, they have the right, it's in their easement and they have total rights to the easement. They have the total right to route whatever electricity they want through those poles to service anybody, anywhere, right?
They can put it in her yard where...
Well, all the rest of the poles are outside on the other property. My pole is the only pole on that street in my yard and now I have two. Mine is the only one in my yard. The other ones are on the other side of the wall.
Oh, understood.
Yes.
Wherever their easement is, normally they don't make mistakes like that.
So who checks, who can check that out to see if it's a mistake? Is that...
I have to find out the contact person. I gave the contact person at DTE before. I don't, you know, I'll look and if you can...
We've been talking to the contact person because they just dumped them in town. They just started dropping them off and never let us know what was gonna happen. And...
Bruce had one.
Or what their schedule was for, you know, changing those poles.
Did they change your pole out or...
No, Bruce Kaner, 18129 Sunnybrook. I was gonna ask, no, they haven't, they haven't done anything with mine. I have called DTE four times and supposedly there, on the, there's a work order that's been submitted to take it out of the ditch. So my question, because when I heard you say they have the right, but do they have the right to do that in the right of way as well? Is that considered their...
No, it's only within their easement. Typically, it's a 10-foot wide, could be 15-foot wide easement, but that's, they're limited to working in that area and storing in that area.
Right, because they have it in my culvert. And it's...
That's where they are most, a lot of places.
Right, it's about 50 feet long and it's, you know, the grass underneath it is all gonna be dead and when it rains, there's no place for the water to go. So eventually it's gonna, we're gonna get a good rain and it's gonna back up.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, actually, you know, everybody has that easement shown on the survey when you buy your house.
Right.
If you go back and look at the title documents you have, it'll show where those easements are.
Right, no, I know I have it in the backyard, at least on my property where they just took a whole bunch of trees down. But I didn't think they, so they shouldn't have put it in the culvert.
Correct.
You said they should or...
Should not have.
Should not if it's not within their easement area.
That's crazy.
Without the city's approval, because that's the city's right-of-way area.
Yeah, so, so I can call them tomorrow and give them that piece of information and see what they have to say.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's kind of hard to leave. You're always interesting. Any...
Anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening? Hearing no more, we will move on, thank you. The next items are, and I have a question on item seven with the city attorney. Both of these items were tabled.
Okay.
And they're to come up under our action items for the zoning board of appeals, I believe it is.
Right.
The public hearings were scheduled and I think were held.
Held and completed? Okay.
Well, I think they probably were continued.
Well, if they were continued, then you...
So we have to, do we have to take these items off the table to have the...
To complete the public hearing then, yes.
All right. So I would need a motion then to move the first item, which is a variance request for 18505 West 12 Mile Road from the table.
I make a motion that we remove variance request for 18505 West 12 Mile Road from the table.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The public hearing then will be resumed on that item. I think the applicant is in the audience. If you wanna tell us briefly what you're proposing and we'll see if anyone here wishes to be heard on that subject.
My name is Frank Reed. I live at 21690 Beaufort Lane in Northville. I'm here representing rebuilding together, working together with South Oakland Shelters to help them with a bike shed for their residents. You should have a packet.
Yep. We do.
Which kind of details what it is we're trying to accomplish. And it's a bike shed for 16 bicycles for clients of the shelter to get to and from their place of employ. And the variances were for square footage and height, as you can see in the packet. Because we need to accommodate 16 bicycles. Originally, we wanted to try for 20, but the building became a little large for that and so we scaled that back to 16, which is about 10% of the client census. And then, as you can see, the other variance was for the site setback, location of the shed itself so that the, you know, proper functioning of the parking lot could be maintained and proper traffic flow and so on. This is a prefabricated shed built by Tough Sheds. I know you've had some other variances before you, variance requests before you using the same vendor. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have regarding any of the above.
Questions from the CBA will probably come during the CBA actual meeting.
I see.
So we'll see at this time, we'll open a public hearing, it's just been opened. So I'll see if anyone here wishes to be heard on this application.
All righty.
For the public. Is there anyone here this evening that's wishing to be heard on this application? Hearing none, we will close that public hearing. I would ask that the second item, be item B of their variance request for 26237 Southfield Road also be removed from the table.
I make a motion that we remove variance request for 26237 Southfield Road from the table.
It's been seconded, it moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Is the applicant for that one here? If you could tell us what it is you're requesting and why?
Hi, my name is David Yun. I'm on Springwater in Northville as well. We are opening a pharmacy or we have been given permission to open a pharmacy, Southfield Pharmacy with Dr. Giulio on Southfield Road. Our variance is for a sign for the pharmacy. The, the way the building was designed, the roof kind of slants towards the parking lot, which made it difficult to have the sign on the face of the building. So instead, what we propose is to have a sign that is on the roof of the building but does not exceed the apex of the roof. So it will look like it's a front-facing sign, but not a front-facing sign, similar to the other signs on the building, such as Dr. Omar to our neighbor. And I believe the bridal has a sign that's kind of on top of their roof that slants this way.
Okay.
Hang on, sorry. Sorry, nothing.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard this evening on this particular request?
So this request is simply to...
Place a sign where it's not normally allowed.
To heighten it, to put it higher, so...
The way the roof is slanted, it's slanted this way, so we wouldn't be able to put a sign on the front of our building. But what we'll do is erect a sign that does not exceed the...
The roof line.
The roof line. So it'll look like it's on the front of the building, but because the roof is slanted this way, there isn't an option.
I did see that yesterday, so I understand.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this this evening? We'll close the public hearing on both of these items then. And I would need a motion to allow the city council to recess, the city council, and to reconvene as the zoning board of appeals.
I'm moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. I'll call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order and... I think there's a set of minutes. Page 63.
The one from before, 62.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yep.
Is that the number that's written in? 63. 63 and 64.
63 and 64. This is minutes for the meeting of the zoning board of appeals on September 25th. Is there any additions to corrections to those minutes?
I don't have any.
Not, could we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The first is the consideration of the variance request for 18505 West 12 Mile Road, which is the bike housing.
Bike shed.
For the South Oakland Shelter folks. You, I don't know. Does anybody have...
Tonight is Ryan Hertz, who's the CEO of South Oakland Shelters. If there's any questions I can support with though.
You'll be the supporting guest?
Happy to.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add to your earlier comments?
Well, as you can see from the site plan, what we tried to do was tuck the shed into the rear portion of the property so it wouldn't be terribly visible from the street. It's right next to the screening wall between the commercial building area and the residential area, so, and there's some pretty large foliage that would really block the view from, from any residential visibility on that side of the masonry wall. So I think from an aesthetic standpoint, it really wouldn't, the extra height wouldn't really be a problem. And in order to get people in and out of the shed with a bicycle, it needs to be of a certain height. So I think that's, that's fairly clear.
Do you know how many people are gonna use bicycles from there?
Oh, yeah, we, no.
Do you really? There's not any place to put them, huh?
We have room for a couple to hang under one of our back stair, our back stairway has a platform at the top and we have some hooks under there, but it's really not adequate. We actually have a number of people who have their own bicycles. We also frequently have folks donating bicycles. And for the most part, we have enough volume of donated bicycles that when people leave into their own apartments, they can take them with them, but during the period of time before they get into housing, this is to help get around.
That's interesting.
Mobility.
Exactly.
Mobility, providing them. Yeah, so.
And we think the enhanced mobility is gonna get people moving into an economic situation where they can achieve permanent housing and I think that's the goal that we all have for them, so.
That's what I've always liked about the program, is that their goal is to find permanent homes.
Precisely.
Which is great.
We do distribute bus passes as well. It's just obviously an issue in our region with accessibility and through public transportation, even with bus passes. So this is very helpful to people, it's empowering.
I think it's a great idea. It doesn't look from your explanation as it's impeding anyone else's property, you're having a visibility, a place of visibility where you can watch the bikes, so to speak.
Exactly.
And you're not, like I said, getting on any of the neighbors' properties, it's just the location, so I think it's a great idea myself, so do we vote?
Well, the, the motions...
I have some.
You got a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so this is, when looking at the pictures of it, this is gonna take some of your parking also, some of the parking spaces away?
Yes, but the number of spots are still in compliance, given the square footage of the building.
And it removes some financial burden for you to have to, from what I understand. Said something about that area, you don't have to repave it or something like that? Did I read that?
Well, we're actually...
Don't worry about it, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, we're actually gonna have to cut the asphalt, replace it with four inches of concrete and be able to bolt the structure to it.
They have a requirement for a concrete pad, they just have to go on.
Yep.
I think it's necessary, so.
Matt, do you have a recommendation in terms of what a motion should be?
Sure, a possible motion towards approval would be to allow South Oakland Shelter at the address indicated to have an outbuilding with the maximum square footage of 320 square feet, maximum height of seven foot eight and a quarter, and with waiving the side yard setback, side yard and rear yard setback.
One slight clarification, the wall of the structure is seven foot eight and a quarter, however, the roof would extend beyond that.
Yeah, it actually go, well, there's, it goes, okay, then the, the ordinance measures the roof. I don't wanna get into it, but a half, half the spot between the apex, like through here.
Oh, I see.
Well, that's indicated on your plan, right?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do it this way. Then motion to approve the outbuilding for bicycle storage for the applicant at the address indicated with the maximum square footage of 320 square feet, with the maximum height of the building as shown on the plan as submitted for the variance, and with the waiver of side yard and rear yard setbacks.
So moved.
You have a motion that's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, the opening, is it gonna be facing outward towards 12 Mile or towards your building?
Well, actually, neither. If you see the, on the plan drawing, there's a little bump out there, there's, that's a ramp, that's where the door is.
Yeah, okay.
And so it, and it will open in such a way as to allow the cameras, security cameras to maintain surveillance on that portion of the shed.
Are you gonna run any electrical through the tough shed?
There will not. There'll be a self-contained solar lighting array that will provide...
On the roof, right?
There'll be a small panel, you'll see, it's on the drawing, a very small solar collector and then there's a battery LED setup that'll be interior to the shed.
Okay. Are you running your video camera off that also or just the...
No, that'll be from, attached to the building, pointed towards the shed.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And we just bring bikes up there?
To donate, it sounds like.
As long as they're donated, that's right.
No problem.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your patience winding your way through the process.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the consideration of motion to approve or deny the zoning variance request for two-six-two-three-seven Southfield Road. Council, do you have, not council, but ZBA members, do you have questions for the applicant now? Specifically, you are asking for a variance...
Was the sign over, right?
For the sign.
I believe we can't put a sign on top of the building, is the ordinance.
Correct.
And so...
Roof, it's not allowed on the roof, so you need a...
Right, we need a variance.
Variance for allowing that. The sign otherwise is compliant with our sign request, or sign ordinance?
There was one mention of the color red, but then that was changed. I'm not exactly sure when it was changed, but...
The color red was changed?
Apparently, we could not have the color red on the sign, but that has recently been changed where red is allowed. I think the State Farm Agency has a red on their sign.
You did amend the ordinance some time ago.
We did amend the ordinance back then, so the colors are within the
Yes.
Palette of colors that we have approved. So the only question is to allow the variance to place it on the sign, on the, on the roof.
That's okay, yeah. So the...
You were a little naughty, I think. You put the sign up, or somebody put it up before applying.
Right, the...
We normally don't like that at all.
Right, I apologize about that.
Consider yourself scolded.
So the ordinance only allows signage on walls, on businesses. The hardship here is that because of the, the way the roof overhangs over the wall, there is no space to put a sign. So the applicant is requesting the sign be placed on the roof, as is the next door business, as I recall. In the location, the sign is ten feet by three feet, and therefore, the board of, board of ZBA members has to determine if that's a sufficient hardship in order to allow the sign on the roof, the fact that he cannot have a visible sign on the wall.
So a suggested motion, if we wanted to approve it...
If, if the board was thinking of even approving something like this, I'm just kidding. The motion...
Make you squirm a little?
The motion would be to allow Southfield Pharmacy, located at two-six-two-three-seven Southfield Road, a variance to allow a roof sign of ten feet by three feet for the reason that reasonable hardship exists in that a sign could not be appropriately placed on the sidewall of the business.
I had a question, though, about the colors, because when we were talking earlier, I don't rec, I mean, I, just because I don't recall, it doesn't mean it doesn't happen, about the color red being a part of it, and I thought that the reason why some of the colors that were approved is because they were a national chain, and not just because...
That's true, with several, several signs, yes. You're right.
And so with State Farm, with the red, that was based off of the fact that it was a national chain, and that is their corporate colors.
Right, well, that, that's assuming that the ordinance has not been amended, and I don't have the ability here to see if the ordinance is amended. Now, the motion tonight only approves the location of the sign and the length and width of the sign.
So if for some reason it's not in conformance, we'd have to notify him separately.
That's correct.
Yep, and we would be okay with taking it down, changing the color. That would be okay.
There you go, or you'd have to apply for another variance.
Okay.
All right, so that's, that's your answer.
All right.
So my...
It's an or you have to apply, or he does have to apply, because he would have to apply.
Not, not if it's going to change.
I guess if we wanted to keep the color red, then we would...
We'll make, we'll make sure, first of all, whether this has been amended or not, and then we'll let you know if that's a continuing problem.
I make the motion. You have another question?
Yep.
No, Kelly has another question.
The motion that you said earlier, should that be in effect, though, with the thirty days to, or...
No, it's, okay, it's a straightforward motion.
Okay.
So Ms. Stallings has adopted the motion as stated by me as her motion.
Okay.
Second.
So moved to seconded. Is there any other discussion?
This is just to approve the size.
And the location.
Not the color.
I don't want any thing to happen.
Unless the ordinance has been changed, and we haven't just noted it.
That's why I just want to make sure that you understand.
I think you understand that, right, that it's just the location of the sign, and that we still...
And the size.
We're still out for the color.
Right.
All right, thank you.
So just one question. I can't tell if this sign can light up. Does it light up?
No, it doesn't light up.
Okay, okay, thank you. You don't have plans for it to light up, because you want to make sure that's clear.
Although...
If we do, we'll apply for another.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're getting it now, huh?
It's all about the permits.
All those in favor, the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. I just have one question. It's a curiosity question, really. It has nothing to do with your sign or your operation, but I'm, I see these smaller pharmacies going up, independent pharmacies going up more and more lately, and it's kind of a reverse of a trend that we watched for years, where the, the big chains were taking over everything, and the little guy couldn't survive by competing with them.
Right.
I know in some of them, they are teamed up with a doctor's office and things like that, and I understand how that might work, but...
I think it's a similar trend with how malls are also dying, because people want more of that personal service.
Right.
And some of the chains where they have different pharmacists all the time, you don't really get to know your pharmacist very well. We're also connected with a doctor's office, so we're able to provide a service to the doctor's patients. So far, a lot of the patients have been very receptive. They love the fact that they can see the doctor and then pick up their prescription all in the same building, and they don't have to go somewhere else. We also offer free delivery, so that's open to everyone.
I also noticed that you had, like, boxes from DMC, you had three boxes that I'm, pardon me?
Those are for the doctors.
Those are for the doctors, from those, those different, yeah, I just happened to, I'm like, okay. I rode past there yesterday.
Can you, can you, are you planning on doing any outreach in Lathrop, and also, can you leave your business card?
Yes, I can come back with a business card. We would love to take part in the Food Truck Fridays. We want to also have a tent there. We're working on getting, like, a canopy.
Give them a, give them a sample of like, carbonates or soda.
You got mine, actually, that's why I came by yesterday, to give you an invitation to tomorrow's business with the community tomorrow night. So please come tomorrow night.
What time?
Six o'clock, six to seven thirty.
Yeah, and if you give Trina your business card, we'd really appreciate that.
The doctor does sometimes stay late till, like, seven-ish on Tuesdays.
Okay.
So as long as the doctors are, we will, we will be there to service the patients.
Yep.
You're fine, but that's why I was there.
Thanks very much.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate it.
No, sir, fine.
Oh, I didn't bring it.
No, not for you. You're fine.
We'll get them next time.
Yeah, just if you could leave the number, that would be fine.
There being no further business to come before the ZBA, I would need...
I have it. I'll give it to you.
Need to adjourn the ZBA meeting and allow the city council to resume.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We reconvene, and we have our action requests under city council. The very first item, and the, we made you wait a long time. I'm sorry.
Didn't want to put bean counter torture, but that's what it's been.
This is our city audit, which is done every year, you know?
Yep.
Same team comes and checks us out, so please.
Good, thank you, Mayor. My name is Pam Hill. I am an audit partner with Plant Moran. I have with me here today Aaron Sarver, who was in charge on the city's audit, so he's really the one who got to do all the work, and I get to stand up here and take all the credit for it today. So we will be brief.
Put you the best out of anybody I know.
Thank you.
Taking credit.
We will be brief, as we know your meeting has gone a little long, but we definitely want to cover anything that you have. So while we'll be brief, if there is anything that you want to dig into more details, we're definitely, obviously, available to you, so... So we spend approximately three hundred hours a year just on the basic financial statement audit of the city. With that, you have a couple deliverables with you today that should have been in your packet. So you'd have your financial statements, which is a large document. It's a little over fifty pages. We don't plan on going through all of those fifty pages tonight, but your mayor has it. It's the one with the, the city's logo on the cover, spiral bound. We also have a brief letter to the city council, which we will go through today. And then we do have a graphation that Aaron, the viewer, want to cover some trends for the city, just to look at the number at high level and through all fifty-plus pages of the financial statements. The other item, which I saw was on your agenda today, which we will very, very briefly talk about, is the required, the new required performance audit that was new this year. The state passed a law back in two thousand and sixteen, requiring a performance audit for your Act fifty-one dollars. So that's the money that is passed through for your major and local streets. So Act fifty-one is a specific law that has very, varying compliance requirements with it, and so we did perform that performance audit, compliance audit, this year. That should have been in your packet as well. We did not have any compliance findings, so basically, it was a clean performance audit of your Act fifty-one monies. So I did want to say a special thank you to Pam and Aaron. We are out here, like I said, we spend about three hundred hours, so on top of their everyday duties, they also had to get ready for us and then field all the questions that we have while we're here. So we did want to just say thank you to them and for the professionalism that we received during the audit. So I'm not going to go through all fifty-some pages, however, the two pages that I think are the very most important I do want to talk about, which are pages one and two, that is the audit opinion letter. So that is what the city hires Plant Moran to provide. Correct, yep. So it, it does not speak to the financial condition of the city. It merely speaks to the numbers as they are presented within the financial statements. And so you have received an unmodified opinion again, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive from your auditors in relation to the numbers as they are presented within the financial statements. So from there, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron, and he's going to, like I said, talk a little bit about the numbers on a high level, and then we'll go from there.
Good evening, everyone. If you want to take out the graph package that was distributed, we'll go through that real quickly here. So starting on page one, this graph is the city's governmental fund revenue for the last... And basically, the city's governmental funds, that will be all funds with exception of the water and sewer fund. So that would be our general fund, our local street funds, and the capital acquisition fund. And basically, you can see, we have kind of broken out our five main sources of revenue new here, which are the other transfers in. Interest and rent, our locally raised funds, that's your licenses and permits, the federal and state funding, which is our state shared revenue and Act fifty-one monies, and then our property taxes. And if you kind of look going from fourteen through seventeen, our revenue has stayed fairly consistent year over year. The biggest increase just from last year to this year would be our property tax revenue. It increased from two-point-seven million to approximately two-point-eight million. That's about a two-point-nine percent increase, and that is mostly a result of the increase in property values across the city for the last year.
And we'll talk in a couple slides about property tax values and where they're at, and how this has impacted the city's budget. So, I mean, we, and we know that's the largest source of revenue, and that's very consistent for pretty much every city. That property taxes is the largest source of governmental revenue.
And then if we move on to page number two, similar to how we just looked at the governmental fund revenues, here's a breakdown of the governmental fund expenditures. You'll see that two thousand and fourteen is rather significant compared to the other three years. That was a result of, because back in two thousand and fourteen, if you remember, the city made an additional contribution to the pension trust funds. That was approximately just over one million dollars. Approximately eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand fell into the governmental services bucket, so that's why you see the decrease from fourteen to fifteen, from one-point-two million to four-hundred thousand. And then the remaining two-hundred-and-fifty thousand came out of the public safety bucket. If we kind of look at it going forward, in the current year, our largest expenditure activity would be public safety. That is at one-point-nine million. That represents about forty-one-point-eight percent of the total expenses. Our total expenses here in the governmental funds is approximately four-point-seven million, and that forty-one-point-eight percent is pretty consistent with other communities in the area.
And that, that went down, I see.
Yeah, it did go down slightly. There could be capital expenditures in there as well. I'd have to look to see exactly why that went down. But it did go down slightly, you're right, from prior year.
Okay, can I ask a quick question back on page one? The interest and rent. What is the rent, the interest and rent? I know it, that we...
I don't, I don't have the detail with me on all of the accounts, but I'm sure we can get that through the city administrator. She could get that information. You have all the breakouts, right, of what's included in that line item? She should be able to give you the general ledger account that, that's made, that it's made up of.
Okay.
I did want to touch just briefly on the expenditures. I think you can see that from sixteen to seventeen, the expenses really have not gone up a lot, especially given all the increases that we know we see in healthcare expenditures every year, so just that alone can have a large impact. I just took a brief look at the budget, and, you know, that's typically what we like to look at to see how did the city do in terms of planning for the year and executing your plan. And I think councils should feel very good about where you ended up in comparison to your budget. For the general fund, you are within three percent of your amended budget, and actually, less than one percent of your original budget. I don't know if I've ever, I've been doing this twenty years. I don't know if I've ever seen that. I think you should feel very good about being able to execute your plan, especially considering the staffing constraints that you've had. Typically, a best practice is, you know, if you're around five percent of where you budgeted, you did pretty good. So I was kind of shocked when I was looking. I'm like, wow, they did an excellent job. So you should feel good about your budget practices and management and council's ability to follow through on what you've planned throughout the year.
Our treasurer is very tight-fisted.
So if we keep moving along, on page three, this graph shows the city's total taxable value, and this is in millions of dollars. We kind of start on left-hand side in year two thousand and eight, and this taxable value is the taxable value of all the parcels within the city, which is what your tax revenue will be based off of. So two thousand and eight, right before the dip in the housing market, our taxable value was at a hundred and ninety-one million. And then you can see it kind of decreased to the low point in fourteen of a hundred and sixteen-point-eight million, and now in seventeen, we're at a hundred and twenty-two million. And really, the purpose of this graph is to kind of show how much of a decrease we've had in taxable values, and then also to show how long it might take the city to recover that taxable value. So if we use a factor of two and a half percent per year, it'll take us until two thousand and thirty-six to actually reach the two thousand and eight taxable value levels.
And I think why that's important, so for... So two reasons. One, that's your main source of revenue, right? So we just talked about that. So your main source of revenue was caught over forty-five percent in two years. And that'll be an important thing to remember in two slides when we talk about your fund balance, and where you've been able to maintain that in the general fund. So your, your main source of revenue was caught over forty-five percent in a matter of, what, actually, a matter of probably six, seven years. The important thing to remember, and I think it's oftentimes hard to explain, is the way that Proposal A and Headley works, when you saw these reductions in your property tax revenue, it was a direct hit to the city. Residents saw a direct decrease in their property tax bills. So now, going forward, because of the way that Proposal A, Proposal A and Headley work together, a taxpayer's taxable value can only increase by the lesser of five percent of our inflation. So we know inflation hasn't been five percent in probably ten to fifteen years at least. So, for example, if someone's home goes up, the value of their home goes up six to seven percent. That might be the state equalized value, or the fair market value. But the taxable value, which is what the city collects property taxes on, would still be limited to inflation. So let's say inflation was two percent, somebody's value went up... So let's say inflation was 2%, somebody's value went up 7%, the city is only seeing an increase in revenue of 2%. And likewise, the resident is only seeing an increase in their bill by 2%. So we bring this up because it's your largest source of revenue, and it really does severely limit your ability to provide additional services, right? Because you're really limited by this inflationary increase every year. And as Aaron pointed out, I mean, we just used a 2.5% just to get a baseline. But so you're talking almost 30 years from the time you lost that value to the time when you'll even just get back to where you are. So, you know, communities in your area really saw the largest decreases in probably Wayne County as well. So I bring it up as a matter of just, you know, information, but then also as you're projecting forward for your budget and where you're, you know, looking out a few years and seeing where you're going to be. This will be an important contributing factor to the fiscal health going forward of the city. Well, this was too sad.
If we continue on, slide number four. Here, we're kind of talking about the revenue sharing payment history, and we kind of start year 2001 and end up with the current year, 2017. And this graph is depicting the statutory state new that the state will disperse to the city. So if you look at 2001, we received around 515,000. And in 2001, the state started decreasing the amount that local units would receive. And the blue bar kind of tracks what the city would have received every year. And if you look at the, kind of the first line in the table below, that'll track the cumulative lost revenue. So if the city would have maintained the same amount of revenue they would have received from the state every year at 515,000 from 2001 through today, the city would have received an extra $2.2 million of revenue from the state. But instead, the city's had to, has had to turn to other sources of revenue or cut expenses to make up for that loss.
And I think that's important, too, as Aaron pointed out, that's your second-largest source of revenue. So you really have constraints on your first and your second-largest sources of revenue.
Then on page five, we have, this is just the general fund, this is our fund balance, and starting in 2014 through 2017, the orange column represents our annual expenditures each year for the general fund, and then the blue column represents the fund balance, which is unassigned or assigned. And that represents basically the current and liquid assets the city has available to spend on expenses. And usually, most cities try to gear that percentage to be between 20 and 50%. So you'll see the city's done a good job of increasing that assigned and unassigned fund balance from 26% in 2014 to now 36% of our annual expenditures this year.
Yeah, so I think the state would say for a city your size, that a minimum is 20%, somewhere around there. And so the fact that your main revenue sources have been constrained, and you've been able to actually add to fund balance, again, I think you should feel very good about as a council and as management, and even your employee groups. I mean, you've all worked really hard at, this kind of goes back to my budget comment earlier, monitoring those expenses. Without that, you wouldn't be the situation that you are. You would be, you know, probably at a lot lesser of a number. But because you had to, you know, you've had to make some tough decisions, and you've really monitored those expenses, and you've made, you know, made the hard decisions, that's really telling, I think, in this graph, and seeing that that blue line, although it's might not have, you know, you might not see huge increases, you're still seeing increases. And the fact that you're at 36% is a healthy fund balance, as far as making sure that you have enough to pay your bills and, you know, look at other options for the city. So, again, you should feel good about where you're at, especially given the large decreases that your particular community has seen in your revenues. Any questions on the graph?
Yes.
Just, yeah, I've got a couple, but, oh.
No, go ahead.
The first one here on page four, where you show what the state, the revenue sharing for the state versus what they give us year on year. I would have liked to have seen the percentage of loss per year, if you could have put that in there, because for the residents looking at this, they would fully understand what we're going through in order to make ends meet.
We can make a note for next year to make sure that that --
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Yeah, and for the videotaping part of this, is there a way we can put up screenshots? Because the audio would speak to the screenshot. Is there a way we could do that? Is that possible? Maybe we could talk to the video people after this?
Yeah, we can provide a PDF of the PowerPoint presentation to the city administrator, if you'd like to put that up.
Yeah, because this is going to go up probably in another day, and we want to be able to hear his voice, and then have the resident look at the screenshot of what he's talking about?
Yes, we can send that to you in the morning, not a problem.
That's a great idea. Can we put it, should we put it on the website as well?
Oh, yeah.
We should put it on the website so that they have.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We can provide it, and then, you know, however you want to disperse it, that would not be a problem.
So, yeah, I did, and this is probably being petty, but that's what I feel right now. We had something going around for our community, for our business people, and some of our residents. So you just really kind of, just, your presentation just kind of wiped out everything that was passed out. So just for verification, as a nanip here, when you went back to our budget, which was on page two, you're saying that we're working within our budget. We are 3% within the amended budget, so we are not exceeding our budget.
Kelly, if you want the exact gauge for the financial statements, if you want it further in more detail, and we don't have to do that now, but just for your own information, it starts on page 49.
And this one?
Oh, correct. And it goes through page 52, and that's where I was getting those numbers. So your total expenditures were budgeted originally at almost 3.6 million, so 3,590,136, and your actual was 3,595,473. So it was within $5,000 of your original.
And so?
It was, actually, it was $100,000 under your amendment.
Okay, so we didn't exceed that. And then, our general fund, which from what I, and I am no accountant whatsoever, from what it looks like to me, that it's growing year after year.
Correct.
Okay, so we didn't obliterate the city's general fund.
This is only a four-year trend, but, yeah, and I think to keep in mind, so I think if we were even go back to 13, I mean, you made a million-dollar contribution to your pension system, too. That was pretty much all that came out of your general fund, and you're still --
Growing.
Growing.
Correct. Okay. Again, it's pettiness, but it's something to be on record for me to say.
That's one of the reasons why, no, that's one of the reasons why I wanted a screenshot, so the residents can see what the council and the staff has been doing year on year, and not what's being, trying to, you know, they're trying to communicate out there. Because a lot of people are under the impression that we're just not managing this correctly. So to look at the screenshot, hear what he had to say, and also hear what you just said, it speaks volumes.
Just two more questions.
And let me just have you repeat what you just said. You said that we should be very proud.
I think you should.
That we have been able to manage the budget and work within our constraints very well.
Yeah, I mean, imagine your personal budget being cut 50%.
50%.
Been there, done that. Yeah, I mean, that's, and a lot of people probably can relate to that, right?
Oh, yeah.
So the fact that you've been able to add to your savings, even though your revenue has been cut, I think speaks to some of the tough decisions that have had to been made at the city.
And I just, and just bear with me, just two more things. And when it comes to our property values, they have actually been growing.
Yeah, so they have started growing, yes, yep.
That was 2%?
2.9, isn't it? 2.9.
Well, that was the increase in the revenue. There are some, there's like penalties and interest and some other things in there, so I don't know if the taxable value itself has gone up exactly that. I think the city administrator would be able to get you that exact increase.
So I checked earlier today, the taxable value of the city increased 1.5% from last year to this year.
But it was an increase.
It was an increase, and so we didn't, we didn't do that wrong either.
It's capped, yeah.
Right. And then the last question I have, we are not approaching bankruptcy.
Not based on your view of your financial statements as of June 30.
And this is from Plant Moran, that's been around since how long?
Since yesterday.
And this is after 700 hours of going through.
So just in that, I want to thank you for putting in, for everything that we have gone through, you did an excellent job of putting this budget together.
Thank you.
And I thank you all for doing the audit, and it's just, you know, we, as a city, are kind of trying to get back on our feet, but this has just kind of solidified that regardless, we still are growing, we still are doing well, and my pettiness rant is now over.
I do have one last question. Can you speak to the overlap as far as duties when it comes to what Pam is doing on a regular basis?
Actually, I was going to get into there next. So next would be the letter to the city council. So there was just a couple items that we wanted to report on, and I guess it would be starting on page two, a couple items related to segregation of duties. And so I know we've talked about this in the past, you have a small office, this is common for small offices. However, this year, it was even smaller, right? So you're down some individuals, and those individuals are key to the internal controls. And so for points in time during the year, there was not an ideal control environment related to your segregation of duties. And so we've kind of outlined a lot of those duties that we typically would like to see segregated. I know that management, along with some effort from council, are trying to put in place anything that they could in the interim that was in there. However, there still was a lack of segregation of duties throughout the year on the cash side, and then also on the IT control side of things. And so we've kind of outlined some suggestions. My recommendation is, depending on how much longer the city administrator job will be filled by the same, by the treasurer, we really should discuss additional controls that could be put in place in who those, you know, who could be the person that would be able to do some of those duties. So I think we put in here that we're more than happy to have a discussion with city council or, you know, the management, whatever is deemed appropriate, whoever you deem appropriate. But even if it's only for a couple more months, I do think it's still important that, you know, you make sure that there are additional safeguards in that time when you are down staff.
So you're saying that even if, I think I heard you say that even if it's only two more months, we need to have a conversation?
I think it's worth it, you know, because it had, you've been without a city administrator, and then I think that some of the bank recs and stuff still weren't being reviewed even when that, that person was here. So it's been a long time when some of the controls weren't in place. So that'd be my recommendation, just because, for everyone's sake, right? So you want to make sure that you're being safe. And so, again, we're more than happy to meet, you know, whenever you'd like, just to discuss those options and see if there is anything that you can do. I think there probably are some small tweaks that could be made, just to safeguard things in the meantime, or at least add just another layer. But it is hard when you, when you have one person performing basically three, three jobs, so.
Can we plan on doing something like that after the elections?
Is it possible?
Oh, you're talking to me? Excuse me. Need to make sure I'm awake before you do that.
Feel free to reach out to us anytime.
Well, the question I was going to ask is, piggybacking on what Kelly said, is that we are, we have told the interim city administrator that you should go ahead and fill the positions, a position that probably would be the logical person to do that type of thing. So I want to make, I want to make sure that as we seek to fill that position over the next couple of weeks, that, first of all, the job description reflects things that will help accomplish your goal, and secondly, that we're screening candidates with that in mind.
Yeah, and I know you and I have discussed that, and ensuring that the job description adequately reflects some of the items that would be appropriate for that individual, making sure they have the right knowledge.
And we're fortunate, as much as the treasurer is a person kind of going to be very much involved in that, she should be able to, you know, reconcile a lot of those things. But I think we would appreciate your input into Pam's rewriting of those things and making sure we're getting the right hire there.
I think that's the perfect timing from our conversation earlier, where you can help Pam with the specs for that person, that we can get to immediately, perfect timing.
Sure. So that, that was really the, the only thing in here that I wanted to make sure to touch on. We had some, just additional kind of best practice recommendations in here, and some updates on legislative items, but I know you've had time to take a look at those, and we don't want to take up any more time, so, but if there's ever, if there's other questions...
But you want to go home, get a bed, get to bed before midnight?
I want to eat my dinner, no? No, but we're more than happy to come back anytime in helping in whatever capacity you may need it, so. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Good news, seeing you every year.
If you can get that to her, really appreciate it.
No problem, we will do it in the morning, yeah. Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Lauren.
Thanks, Pam, good job.
That's perfect timing.
Sorry we held you up so much.
You've received the audit report.
Yep.
We actually have two items in a row. The first is consider a motion to accept the 2016-17 audit.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. And while you didn't talk a lot about the Act 51 audit, this is new.
Briefly at the beginning.
This is new to us this year. First year the state has required that. I don't know what it says about the fact that all these years, they've been sending cities money and never auditing or demanding an audit.
Well, you've had to report on it, now they're just requiring us to audit your report, basically.
That's crazy.
So we need a motion to accept the performance audits for the Act 51 funding.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too, thanks.
Good job.
Enjoy your dinner.
We have an election coming up on November 7th, and Madam Clerk, I think you need a council member to be appointed to the election commission.
Yes.
And custom would have, well, I would offer to do that, I'm on the ballot, so I guess we should probably have someone else.
Excludes you and me in as well.
I was going to volunteer right now.
So that really was easy, wasn't it?
I can't volunteer?
No.
How about if I, how about if I don't run, and then I can volunteer?
I wonder who that's going to be?
I'll volunteer.
You have no choice!
Why?
Because it has to be two people, one person, oh, between, oh.
One council member.
Oh.
Good. That's cool.
So, right after this meeting, we have our election commission.
We need a motion.
I make the motion for a council installing to be appointed to the election commission.
Is this seconded?
I second.
Has been moved and seconded, and you humbly accept this, okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
No opposedes?
No.
Not in the least bit.
You won unanimously.
I'll do it.
The, what about the other, you did the appointment, right? You did the appointments, three other appointments to the election commission, right?
Yes, yes.
And you said there's a meeting right after this one?
Yes.
That will run into the wee hours of the morning?
We did it last year.
It'll run into the wee hours of the morning.
Another meeting.
You remember what you were saying?
She's a feeder, huh? She's a taskmaster.
The next item on our agenda is the city council consider a special land use for the Class C liquor license at Honey Tree Grill, located at 28601 Southfield Road. I, yes, you want to get up and introduce yourself, please?
I'm Max Flores, I'm the operator for 28601 Honey Tree Grill on Southfield Road. I would like to be able to use that special land use for liquor license Class C. I have had some hardship in the restaurant business, and I would like you to consider that.
So, you, you applied for this through... So the, you, you applied for this through the state of Michigan, first of all.
Yes.
Secondly, you've gone through the planning commission who has recommended to this body, their approval of your request, let's see, if I can read this exactly. The planning commission unanimously approved a motion to recommend to city council the approval of special land use for Class C liquor license at Honey Tree Grill, the address mentioned. And I think Jill Bame, who is our planning consultant, also provided a letter dated October 6th in which the land use permit was granted and it's, to allow the sale of the alcoholic beverages at the subject property, subject to the following conditions. Screening of the dumpster and grease containers, replacing of the dead landscaping in the front and side yards, remove some of the concrete on the west side of the Villa Street parking area and replace it with landscaping, and repositioning of the concrete bumper blocks. And I understand that they toured the site with you and that you had no problems with these conditions? So, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, since this is a special land use, you have in front of you a proposed special land use resolution. Now, remember that Class C liquor license, as I understand, this one is coming from your inventory?
That's correct.
And I don't know how many you have left or anything, but you would be, you would be granting your last liquor license then until the next census is taken in 2020 to this business. Now, under your liquor license ordinance and special land use ordinance, there's a list of criteria which presumably has been met because you have a positive recommendation from the planning commission. The highlights of the proposed special land use state that this business meets the current regulations except for the listing made by the inspection. And I guess my question to the council is, when would you like those items done? We can put those limitations in the special land use resolution with a specific date for them to be done by. If he doesn't complete those, then you have the right to bring him back in under a hearing to revoke the special land use and revoke the liquor license. So that would be my recommendation that you decide on a time limit on when those things would be accomplished and we would put that in the resolution.
The planning commission, it says here, basically I think the one item was the landscaping would probably be difficult because of the time of year we're running into. So that they thought that the June 1st deadline of 2018 was what they recommended.
Okay.
The other items, I assume they were expecting would happen.
No, the one with the broken, the concrete has to be done before the winter time.
Before or during spring?
Before, it says before winter.
That's going to be difficult.
Broken concrete is the Southfield.
Yeah, it's right on the.
It's on Southfield Road.
Yep.
It has nothing to do with our property.
Well, we see the photo here.
Yeah, he can't, he can't control Oakland County Road Commission's requirements. He can only do what's required on his property, which would be the remainder of the items. So if you just unilateral, or not unilateral, if you just decided to put in the June 1st time date, so everything is consistent, at least you would know and the applicant would know.
That would make sense.
And you wouldn't have a problem with any of that and you'd actually try to do that ahead of time, I'm sure. All right, so we will find a place to put that in. The special land use goes on to say that general business hours, 11 to 11, Monday through Thursday, and Friday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to midnight is allowed that the other.
Doesn't mean you have to do it.
Good, thank you.
It means that you have some flexibility there, which, that's the other thing you try to do with these land use things is, especially when you're setting the hours that people are going to be open, is you obviously want to be conscious of neighbors in the area, but the other thing is to make sure that we don't put you in a straitjacket that brings you back here in six months saying, I need approval to stay open until 10 o'clock, not 9 o'clock or something like that.
I think 9 o'clock matters more than adequately.
Goes on to require rooftop air purification system to keep odors from leaving the premises. Twice a week refuse pickup, which must be verified in writing by the building official. References interior grease capture system and no storage of grease outside. References the fact that this liquor license, since it is issued by the city of Lathrop Village, cannot be removed from the city for up to five years. In other words, without that limit, and he has to write a letter saying he agrees to that term. Without that, he could turn around and sell this liquor license next week outside of the city for the going rate. So this five year is, five years is a commitment from him on doing that. He could sell it to another business in Lathrop within that five-year period, but just so it doesn't leave the city. And that's it. So with the special land use resolution in front of you, the only addition then, I would add an item right at the end, an item PQR, which would state that the applicant agrees to complete the, all of the required site improvements. It's listed in the letter of Joe Baum, no later than June 1st, 2018. So that would be if you are going to approve. If you are not going to approve the issuance of the special land use for the liquor license, then obvious motion would be in the negative.
So the, the license, you said, you mentioned something earlier that he, the license is for five years.
No, the license is forever, but he cannot remove it from the city of Lathrop Village for the first five years.
Okay, okay. So we lose our rights to?
After the five years, yes.
After the five years, we lose our rights?
Correct.
Okay. I said something else, I.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
To approve.
To approve.
The special land use resolution.
As described by the city council.
The special land use motion.
Resolution.
Resolution, excuse me.
As in the packet and as described by me with the additional language.
Amen.
Being item R.
As described by you, and what was it?
With the additional language.
With the additional language for paragraph R.
For the additional language of?
Regarding site improvements.
Paragraph R with the site.
Regarding site improvements.
Regarding site improvements.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
So, so just so we're clear, you have four bullets here, so. By the way, what took you so long to get this thing? We've been waiting for a while, a liquor license. So, so the first one is screen the dumpster and the grease containers, you understand that?
Yes, I do.
The replace dead landscaping in the front and side yard, you understand that? This is the one that's kind of confusing. Just so you're clear, remove some of the concrete on the west side of a Villa Street parking area and replace it with landscaping. So you understand that one?
Correct.
And reposition concrete bumper blocks.
That's already done.
Okay, all right, just so you understand it, okay, thank you.
And it's going to be done by June? Wait, no, 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 and then all of that's to be done by June 1st?
Correct, no later than. Yeah, 2018, yeah.
2018. But as the attorney suggested, you try to do it a little earlier if you can.
I promise you I will.
Okay, well.
Who made the motion? You did. And was there a second? The second was made. Ready for other discussion?
So when does that happen?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
He hasn't, he hasn't been approved yet.
I kept thinking one other question.
What's that?
So, so with it being June, June 2018 that he has to have these things repaired, that has nothing to do with the activation of the license?
Just gives you the right to bring him back and punish him.
But if we voted today, he can.
He can proceed forward.
Okay, all righty.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. You're approved, good luck to you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
All right.
Good job on dinners, by the way.
Congratulations.
Yes. Next item, the city council will consider a motion to purchase Civic Plus Recreation software. I'm going to ask our Parks and Recreation Coordinator or Director.
I can bring it back for you if you want.
All right, thank you.
You can just stop at the place.
I will, I will, I was talking before. Okay.
Okay.
Good evening.
This is an item, well, first of all, I guess we need an action to remove this item from the table.
I make the motion to remove it from the table.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. So Trina, maybe you can explain this and then we'll see if the council has some questions.
Yep, okay, so I've looked at a few different recreation software packages and the reason I'm leaning towards Civic Plus is just for that reason, it's Civic Plus. Eventually down the road, we can tie any of our other processes such as water bills, anything else that we take money for, we can pile it in on this single software. They gear towards municipalities. So the guy that I've been dealing with, Richard, usually they do a six-hour training since we're a little more unique and it's not just for soccer leagues, baseball leagues. We need to gear it towards our community room. Clerk Tally spends most of her day fielding phone calls about reservations for this, for the community room. If we get the software, people can go online and see what days are available down to the hour. So if someone wants to go in and block it off from noon to 4:00 on a Saturday, someone else can go on and say, oh, I wanted it from 4:00 to 8:00, they can go block it off. It gives our residents the opportunity to see what's out there from home. They can do it right off, it's cloud-based, they can do it from their phone, they can do it from their computer. My senior trips, they can go on there, they can print a ticket from home, they can save it on their phone. The senior tee that's coming up, it creates a ticket for the event that they can bring in or they can come in here still. I'd like to set up a computer downstairs in the lobby where they can just come in. If they're here exercising, they can just come in, do it. It frees up time from our staff doing water bills plus signing. The residents up for my programs. Right now, we're signing residents up with a three-carbon copy sheet. It gets confusing. Sometimes I don't know people signed up and I have a bus for 35 people and one more shows up. It's only been a problem twice, but with this, it would just make things a lot smoother.
So you feel like the system pays for itself? How, that just seems like a, a lot of money.
It does seem like a lot of money, but if you were here for, if you were just here for a day and sat in my office or Yvette's office, I, I feel bad for Yvette. Like I walk into her office and she is saying the same stuff over and over and over about that community room. The community room would, we would benefit and get much more done if we could just have people go online and schedule themselves.
And they pay when they?
Yep.
They can pay as well?
Pay right on here, you fill out the forms that you need. It spits out the forms you, like when you sign it, it'll spit it out for you. You can do all the payments on there. And then there are some other things. Uh, let's see here. We can do surveys. Oh, they do email blast and Facebook blast, any type of social media. It can come straight from them, but it's logalled from the city. So you don't know it's Civic Plus, but it's whatever our logo is on, it looks like it's coming straight from me. Making flyers is a big task. You know, it takes a, it could take a couple hours if I wanted to make a flyer. This, they already have it condensed, type in the information I want, they throw it out on Facebook for me or any email blast.
So it also allows an opportunity to expand to, to expand programs, your.
Yeah, I, to be honest, we're one of the only Parks and Rec Department without a software. And when I went to the national conference two weeks ago, I was talking to a lot of different software companies out there. And Civic Plus is geared to smaller municipalities like ourselves where we can do room breakdowns. You know, if we wanted to run out the meeting place up here, we can put that on there. So like the Lions Club can go up there and just reserve it every Wednesday, every other Wednesday. So then. Spoke about that. Yeah.
But we truly aren't without a recreation program technically, because we have ACU, Active Net that no one's used.
We paid for it, but it's, we paid to set it up. It's going to cost like another $4,500 to go from here. Active Network is one of the most expensive ones out there. Anytime like I sign up for a 5K race or I signed up for a big mountain biking race, everybody uses Active Network when you have a big race. Like the fifth third River Bank Run in Grand Rapids where 60,000 people come to run, they use that. Lathrop Village shouldn't be using Active Network. It does so much more than what we needed, so we'll be paying for stuff we don't even use.
But the point is that, that we was still, we still have it, though we did already pay for it. And my understanding when we went through that particular presentation, that it was also supposed to reserve rooms.
Yeah, it will.
From what I'm hearing, it did the similar, something similar to what you're saying now about Civics Plus. So my question would be, how do we know that Civics Plus is not going to end up being our Active Net? Where we already paid into it?
Because the startup cost for this is 5,500, not the 6,000 that you guys paid already. And then you're going to have to pay another 4,500 on top of it to activate it. Active Network isn't even activated right now. It's going to cost another 4,500 just to activate. That 6,000 that you paid was just for the training that never got done.
But to me, it's still the same thing, because we can, we already have it, we already paid the 55 or 5,500, $6,000 for it, so we have it. So regardless of the fact is that we could either pay another 5,500 towards Civic Plus Recreation Star or Something New, or we can pay 4,500 and use what we already have and get, you know, trained on that.
I agree. It would be, okay, so here's my, my spiel of going Civic Plus. It would be going. It would be like going, if you wanted a pair of Nikes, going to Nike to buy it. It's going to take you forever, even if you don't even get in the doors to get it, where you could go to Foot Locker, they can hand them to you. If you go with Active Network, it is so big and they're not, they don't, they're dealing with the Chicagos. They're dealing with the LA's. Those are the people they're going to gear towards that they're getting because they base it on population. So when you have a million people in your city, they're banking revenue off of them. Every, every transaction, they get 3%.
And Civic Plus does not?
They do it a little different, they get, they may get more than 3%. These guys get 3% of ours. So when you get, they're going to push, they're not going to answer a phone call, I'm going to tell you that right now. When LA's calling with a big problem, they're not going to know where Lathrop Village is. They're not going to deal with us because they make $4,600 a year off of us, where they're making millions off of these other cities. So I don't know whoever okayed Active, it's kind of, it's done with. But no, I'm not saying like, it shouldn't ever have been brought up. Like there wasn't research done. East Grand Rapids uses Civic Plus and they're a much bigger city than us. But they like them because they have that one-on-one with them. There, you call them, they answer. I called Active Network today, I emailed them, he won't call me back. So that's my point of going with a smaller guy. So that's my point of going with a smaller guy. Um, I don't know. I know you guys invested in money, that's $6,000 thrown out the window.
And see, I don't know if we, we invested this money in, you know, we're not, we don't know which one would actually be the best one to go with, but we did invest money into this other one already. I don't know if that's user error, that somebody didn't, you know, set up training and get trained on it. I don't know if it's just the fact that we decided not to use it. I don't really know the facts and the, the only fact I know for sure is that Lathrop already paid $6,000 into Active Net, if that's the right one.
Yeah.
Active Net. Where with Civics Plus, we're gonna be coming out the 5,500 and do we have to pay the 4,500 at this time or after?
5,500 is the first year. And the next year is 45.
It's $4,500 after that, and so.
What is Active Net the second year?
There is none. No, this is guaranteeing a two-year contract where Active, I don't even know the full details with Active Network, it's.
Do you have an apples-to-apples comparison?
That's what I was gonna say.
What Active is giving us versus, versus Civics Plus? 'Cause we, we wanna just look at what, what the features are. Okay, we paid 6,000, we have this right now, but compared to what you're recommending.
Does the same thing. The website may look a little nicer if you're Active. I.
I can understand.
I don't know if they would do room rentals, like break it down, they may do park rentals.
No, they, they said at the time, 'cause I recall, I don't know if you all remember or not, but it was something about, the whole reason why we went with them is because of the room rental issue.
They all do that.
That. Well, I'm just saying, that was, that was one of the selling features from what I recall is about the room rentals and the fact that people could go online and do it, it sounds similar to me.
Right.
And I don't, again, I don't know, is it just that we're not using it? And then we could possibly get trained on it, spend the money towards something that we already have in place? Or do we scrap what we paid for and never used? That's where I have my little, you know.
No, I get it.
But I think that that's, that's dependent upon the, comparing the features, comparing, 'cause I can't, I do get it sometimes when there's a software, although just the fact that it doesn't cost anything the second year is kinda hard for me. But I do get that when you have software that's really complicated, when it's for a bigger company, it can be very complicated to use, but I, I agree with Councilman Ferguson that maybe to see a comparison sheet, so you could tell us what, I mean, we just have to do that since we've already put in, put finances into it and it doesn't cost anything for the second year. If that wasn't apparent, I guess I would think differently.
Yeah, I don't know what happened with that.
But, pardon me?
It's unfortunate that you guys invested money and it's not being used.
But just prove to us why we should make the switch. That's all we're asking.
Yeah, no problem.
Just prove to us why we should make the switch and, and let's go from there.
Okay. You can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We need to, we're supposed to make a decision tonight, so that needs to be tabled again.
Is there a way, next council meeting, I can pull up a demonstration?
Absolutely.
A TV or?
At our, at our study session?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I can do a study session.
Oh, yeah, let's do it.
But we have to make a decision, so it'd have to be at our council meeting.
Oh, right.
Right, so it has to be at our council meeting.
But she can show you the demonstration.
She can show us, yeah, at the study session.
Yeah.
Knock it out the park.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I agree with, somebody, somebody said what I was thinking, but.
Show us, show us the money.
Making all the things.
You wanna make a motion to return this to the table?
I'd like to make a motion to table, to table.
To our next meeting?
To our next meeting.
Second.
Moving second.
Before the next study session.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Smart contract. Madam Clerk, is that you?
Yeah, me. Well, I know this is done annually. This year, it looks like they bumped it up to $4,000 for the smart credit contract. So we're bringing this before you today for your approval.
Okay. There's two different types of credits, right? So it's totaled about, almost $8,000 between the two, right?
Mm-hmm.
That we received.
You're talking about the municipal credits of 3990 and the second community credit? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
The 3990 was from last year that we had, yeah, and then, well, yes, it's two different types. Yeah, 3990 and the 4,000.
I think in the past, before we were actually participating community in the, participating city, we were only eligible for one type of credit.
We'd get $1,800.
And now we get, now we get two types of credit and more money for it, so. It is, it helps us with a number of our programs.
Is that a no-brainer here?
Yeah.
Yes, I think so. It's, they're giving us the money back, your credits back.
Okay, so can we vote?
Need a motion to approve the contract with smart for the use of municipal and community credits for 2018.
So move.
There's a move, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. City Administrator, do you have any other information you wanna share with us this evening?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Not at this time, all right. City Attorney.
Oh, it's been a pleasure as normal. It's good to be back with you all.
We won't, we won't hold it against you that you're fiddling a little bit, that's all right. So are there any unfinished or new business items that council members wish to bring up?
I just, I wanted to reiterate something that you said earlier because I'm starting to see more of it and we discussed it in our study session about the usage of social media. And that is, is that it's, it's an optional thing for the council to be on social media. And so I don't want anyone to really think that we're not answering or you're not being heard if you're not answered through Facebook, because at any time, anybody can close their Facebook page and, and not be a part of the group. Plus, number two, is that if more than three council people respond to a post, we violated the Opens Meeting Act.
It's possible.
So we have to be very careful on what we're responding to. So my suggestion to all our residents, if you really have a burning question or concern, can always contact Ian on his cellphone and you can email us or call us or especially call the office. That's pretty much really the best way. And we did talk about in our study session about the timeliness of responding to our emails and phone calls, which I can say that I'll do a better job within the 24-hour period of once I get it to respond, to say something. So, that's all.
And to piggyback off Kelly, my number is open too, just, you can call, but I, I too elect not to respond to things on Facebook. But I, I wanna remind everybody tomorrow's the Coffee Hour business to community, meet the community. It's, it's, it seems like it's, it's coming to be a wonderful opportunity for the businesses to meet the community and vice versa. There's a surprise for new business owners, startup businesses, and also the candidates who are running for city council will be present. They've all been invited, so please come out to the Coffee Hour tomorrow here at Lathrop Village, City Hall, and bring your neighbors. I worked very hard to try to make this happen tomorrow for the, for the businesses' sake as well as the community. So, that's all for me.
Let me add one more thing, keeping in the same light, League of Women Voters will have a candidate forum on the 25th of October.
Yes.
Starts at 6:30 to 8:00 here at City Hall, and all the candidates will be there and refreshments will be provided.
Yeah.
So we hope you guys come out and if you have burning questions, you're, they will take questions from the audience, so.
What, what is that, Ian?
The 25th of October.
It's on a Wednesday.
Wednesday, 6:30 to 8:00.
All right.
No new additional businesses that come before this group proceeding?
Don't you have something coming up? You forgot Yvette. Didn't you reschedule something?
Yvette, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Trina has to. Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Just a reminder, that contest is rescheduled for this Wednesday, 5:00 to 7:00 because of the torrential rains on Saturday. So it is short in time, but we got all the vendors back except for the face painter, so other than that, it'll be a good time. Lots of food, so come hungry.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have volunteers and everything?
Yeah.
Volunteers all set?
Yeah.
Yvette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna remind everyone that Election Day is November 7th. It'll be November 7th. The polls open at 7:00 AM and they close at 8:00 PM. I'm gonna give you a few dates that you may want to jot down. November 4th is the last day that I can mail out absentee voter ballots, that's a Saturday. So I'll be here in the office from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM in case you wanna stop by and pick up your absentee voter ballot. But that is the very last day that I can mail absentee voter ballots, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, 2:00 PM is the cutoff time. Now, the very last day that you can vote absentee in person is the day before the election, and that's November the 6th. You can come in the office from 8:00 AM until 4:00 PM, you can receive your absentee voter ballot. So I wanted to make sure that I put those dates out there. And I look forward to seeing everyone on Election Day. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Yvette. At this time, Lieutenant Taylor motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Second.
So moving second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.